One with 100 people on it. Just let me know, everybody. I have to shut it down as soon as it opens because I get feedback. One with 100 people on it.
Jamie.
Okay, is it working?
Yes.
Okay, great. And we have about one minute until it's 6:30, but I know Deb likes to give us the final heads up or final go ahead.
And it was 6:30.
Okay, great. Thanks. Welcome, everybody. Nice to see everyone. Nice to have people who are watching us with us tonight. Thank you for taking time out of your busy evenings to be with us. I'll open the meeting and ask everyone to stand for the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. Jamie, I'll turn it right over to you. I don't have anything tonight.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everybody. It's great to see all of you. As you can see, we have some guests here with us this evening. You can see Mr. Kane, our cult for music, and you maybe even could see the stage, and you'll be able to see that a little bit better in a moment. But I figured we'd start with some fun stuff. Music in Our Lives Month is March, and as you may or may not know, music has been a little bit missing from our lives simply because of the restrictions we're under and and it's difficult to do concerts and things like that. But Greg and his colleagues and all of our students have been just so fantastic trying to bring music to our students in an alternative format. It has not been easy, but they have been superstars in trying to make it look easy, engaging, and fun for our students. And so, without further ado, I want to thank Greg and all of his colleagues, all of our music students, and turn it over to Greg.
Hi, everybody. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, Greg.
Right, super. Thank you. It's so nice to be here tonight. I want to thank everybody for taking a few minutes out of this meeting, which I'm sure they'll, you know, this isn't a busy time at all. I'm sure tonight is going to be a piece of cake, right? But I really do, I want to say thank you right off the bat. And as Jamie recognized, mentioned, Recognizing Music in Our Schools Month. And as he, as he said, I am, I'm a music teacher here at the academy, and I'm also the curriculum area lead teacher in our district. It's always such an honor to come to this meeting once a year. I was thinking back earlier today, I think it's, we're coming up on 10 years of doing this every single year. For any of you who've been a part of the Board of Ed for, for a while there, but each year we try and bring a different act to the stage. And usually the stage is like the bus garage or the cafeteria at the bus garage. And this certainly, this certainly is a whole new level here for us today, and I'll mention a couple of words about that. But I wanted to just start by, by saying, you know, Music in Our Schools Month is something that's celebrated across the country. It's not just certainly a Canandaigua thing. And it, but, but here in Canandaigua, I just feel like every single year I have an opportunity to say, I could say 10 great things about every level of instruction. And in Canandaigua, we teach them music from pre-K all the way up till 12th grade. So there's always something, there's always something happy to share. And even this year, you know, with, with everything that we've gone through and education has gone through in general, music is still serving as a beacon of light for so many of our students. So, you know, every year, the National Association for Music Education, they, they sort of create a slogan or a theme for Music in Our Schools Month. And I wanted to share that with you tonight. I think it's really important, and I think it connects with all of our kids here and, and perhaps you at home in your own home. But the theme of this year's Music in Our Schools Month is music, the sound of my heart. And I, I just think about how, you know, so many of us have really been living in, in isolated environments for the last year. And, and I know that when every single one of us looks deep inside of ourselves, we can, we can think of a moment in the last 367 days where, where music has indeed impacted us in our lives at some point, whether it's to bring calm and peace or focus or whatnot. It does something different for everyone, and certainly for our students in school at every level, it certainly does something for them too. There's a huge social emotional piece with music education. So, as I mentioned, you know, in music and across our district, this year included, we have hundreds, maybe a thousand students right now participating in, in music ensembles despite the hybrid model and everything. But I just jotted down a couple of thoughts, but you know, these, these kids come to class still once a week or twice a week. You know, we're celebrating their creative spirit. They're sharing joy with their classmates. They're feeling at home with their peers, especially up here at the high school. As you guys know, the music wing is just its own little bustling village. You know, they taking chances in front of other students and perhaps more so than ever before in their lives as musicians. They're taking chances, putting themselves out there. I like to think they're demonstrating good character, certainly building teamwork. And of course, they're, they're learning to be musicians. That's what we teach is music. So there's a myriad of great things that take place, you know, in addition to that. So, so a, a, as everything has unfolded in the last year, I gotta say this, I feel optimistic tonight. I shared with the students here, you're going to meet in a second. You know, this kind of felt normal. I put a tie on and we have nice pants on and shoes. And we're up here on our beautiful stage, and it's, it's such a thrill to be able to say that. But I'm also really proud of Canandaigua, and I, and I have to say that from the top of my lungs. I don't know how to say it any stronger, but I want to thank three people, three groups of people. The first one is those. Look, for our students, this has not been easy, and it's not what anybody signed up for at any level in any area. And I see them in class, and I see them coming back every day at every level. And I just, I really, I want to say thank you because they're, they're out there and they're doing it. So, so thank you guys for that. The 12-foot life, as some of you know, it's almost impossible for some kids. But, but, you know, no matter how small the victory has seemed this year, I, I think that it's, it's projected us forward. So, so thank you to our students. I also want to say thank you to every teacher in our department. I think we have 14 in total right now, music teachers in this department, pre-K through 12. They started working on plans for a safe return in music education probably last May, and they were all over the summer constantly communicating, I think we can do it here. And I am so proud to share that, with the exception of our beginner instrumentalists, we are offering music instruction this year at every single level, which is just a fantastic thing to be able to say. And I know that very personally from other districts. And then lastly, several of you are here tonight, and I know some of you are tuning in as well, but to every administrator in our school district, I don't know how to say it loud enough during this year in particular, but, you know, I never once in this process this year heard a doubt or a challenge or saw a red flag go up that talked about, boy, you know, I don't think, I just don't think we can do that. They constantly leaned in and asked us, all of you, you asked us, you know, how can we do this safely? You know, what do you guys think? You're the ones on, you're, you're the boots on the floor. You know, you guys know best in your area. So, and because of that, we're able to offer kids as much as we are this year. So, I wish I could present you some citation of like statewide excellence or something, but I think I'm going to present these great kids to you instead tonight. So, so thanks for that. So, look, we've got, thank you, Michelle. So I have sometime in August, when we figured out who was going to be in which cohort and what school was going to look like, my schedule showed up, and let's see, Jazz Ensemble 1 on the gray cohort day had three students in it. And I said to myself, well, boy, what the heck? How are we going to do that? And then I, then I leaned in a little closer, and I saw the three students who were there, and I got really excited really quickly. First of all, all of them play saxophone really, really well. And they have been kind of a rock for me this year because we, we see each other once a week for 40 minutes, and we, four of us rehearse really safely in the band room. And it's, it's such a, been such a pleasure. And for me personally, as a musician, it brought great comfort to me because we were playing. And tonight will be our first time kind of playing public. I'm going to walk you around the stage here. I'm not going to fall off the stage. But I asked everybody to just introduce themselves. Whoa, okay. I asked every, oh, Jamie went too quick here. All right. So, over here, we've got.
Hi, I'm Marina Schneider. I'm in 11th grade, and I'm in Wind Ensemble, Jazz Ensemble, and Sound. And I just love being part of this program.
The sound.
Hi, I'm Bryn Rice. I'm in 12th grade. I am in Wind Ensemble, this Jazz Ensemble, the other Jazz Ensemble, and the Sound.
Hi, I'm Kristen Rose. I'm in Wind Ensemble. I'm in New Jazz. I'm in this, and I'm a senior.
That's right. So, look, these are three fantastic students here at the high school. Wow, you can see me walking across the stage. Isn't that weird? Okay, these are three fantastic kids here, and we're excited. We're going to play a piece called The Irish Suite. We're a little bit late for St. Patrick's Day. We hope, we, we hope you forgive us on that one. This is arranged by a composer and music professor, actually, from the Crane School of Music in Pottstown, my alma mater, named Elliot Del Borgo. And this piece of music has three different sections in it. There's a dance, there's a really beautiful lullaby. And then at the end, there's a piece called The Irish Washer Woman, which I think most of you will know. I need to move my laptop here, and Mr. Rogers is going to take over in the back. And
That was awesome, awesome, awesome. We give you a standing ovation. That was just fantastic.
Thank you so much, Jeannie, and thanks to everybody again for having us here tonight. And I wish you all well throughout the rest of this meeting.
Oh, our hearts. Thank you so much. That, it, it's just always a joy to have your musicians with us. And this one was particularly moving. Thank you, everybody. Thank you so much.
Thanks, guys. Have a great night.
You too.
Well, what? I wish I went first. I really don't want to follow that. And maybe we just cancel this whole board meeting and just have them continue to play. Have the other as well. Well, fantastic. So the only other part I have is a sizable piece, which is really kind of our COVID update, which we've been doing for months now, and reopening planning, which I know we've advertised widely and why we have a fairly large audience here tonight. I think we're just around 300 now, which is fantastic. So, I'm going to share my screen, if you all don't mind. I know it's difficult because we can't see each other when I do that as well. But I have a slideshow. Everybody, can you see that? Okay. Can I get a thumbs up if you can? Thank you.
Good.
Thank you. So, let's start with a lot of the pieces here. And by all means, if you have questions, interject. You don't need to wait till the end. But if it's easier to wait to the end, then we can do that as well. Ultimately, at the end, I'd like to hear from the board, your reactions to what I present, your thoughts, your reflections, anything you think we ought to consider, anything you think I'm missing. But really, what we're going to talk a bit about is what, what we need, what is needed to fully reopen. There's a lot of buzz right now around fully reopening. What timeline might we have for a full reopening? What guidance can we anticipate for a full in-person learning? And then any questions, again, at the end, there'll be time for questions. Let's take a look at our COVID numbers. This is for students. Again, this is the gray is quarantine. For those of you tuning in for the first time, the gray scale is, is quarantine, and the red is isolation. Remember, isolation means that they have COVID. The gray quarantine means they could have been exposed to somebody with COVID, and now they have to quarantine as a result. These are the student numbers, and this is coming off of the holiday break. At our peak, at one time, we had as many as 75 students in quarantine, and we had as many as 24 students at one time with COVID. Last week, for three consecutive days, we reported zero students with COVID. There is some questions about that zero number. And we, we did do a little footnote in the communication to try to explain it. We did actually have one student who was presumed positive with COVID last week. Presumed positive means that they have fairly compelling symptoms of COVID, and the doctors have confidence in saying you have COVID. You know, you need to isolate. The way it's set up right now in the Department of Health portal is we can only report positive cases if there's an actual positive test. And presumed positive individuals, they don't actually take the test. And so we did have one presumed positive case last week that resulted in some students in that classroom quarantining as a precaution. But the, for reporting purposes, there was actually one day before we had the presumed positive, and then we had two days with the presumed positive that we didn't, that wasn't reported as per protocol. And you'll see, we have a little bit of an uptick. We actually have three students in isolation right now and two that are presumed positive on top of that. So, in total of five. And then 24 in quarantine. So it is, you can see, it's climbing a little bit. We don't necessarily know why, but what I can tell you is anytime there's a case, we have to assist the Department of Health with contact tracing. Vern Tenney does the majority of that for us, 99.9% of it. I shouldn't say that high. The building principals do quite a bit, coaches, advisors, they do quite a bit as well. And so it is a shared lift, but Vern is the point person for that. What I can tell you is, you know, out of curiosity today, I kind of sent an email to Vern and said, I, I just wonder how many people we've had in quarantine because of a potential school exposure? And how many ended up getting COVID because of a potential school exposure? We've had almost 200 COVID cases throughout the course of this year. We've had almost 700 cases of quarantine. We can trace back at most three instances where perhaps six total people may have contracted COVID on campus, and they all involve our adults. They don't involve our students. Now, again, this isn't, I can't say it with certainty. We do our best to contact trace, as does the Department of Health, and they make their best judgments based on the information that is shared with them. But what I can tell you is when people quarantine because of a potential exposure at school, it's very rarely, very rare that they actually end up having COVID down the road from that exposure. Where it happens most of the time through quarantine is if it's in the family. So someone has to quarantine because a family member has it, and then it works its way through the family. That's what we see most often. And then for our staff, again, positive numbers in a good way, not positive is in a bad way. But you'll see, at the peak of our staff with COVID, we had as many as 10 at any one time. And we had as many as 19 in isolation. And you remember, sometimes it was tough to staff in certain buildings where sometimes those, those quarantines were all isolated in a certain building, building. But what the good news is, since February 17th, if you follow this red line across, this is our staff COVID cases. So now we're over a month without a singular staff COVID case. I'm knocking on wood because I want that trend to continue. But at the same time, perhaps a lot of it has to do with the vaccination. You know, we know we were aggressive with the vaccination, and many, many staff here received it. We do see our quarantine numbers have, have stayed pretty consistent, three, two to three for about a month, but we see it's up to five right now. And so it did jump up a little bit. Some of that has to do with staff members who have family here, and their student has it, and now because they're a family member, they're in quarantine as well. So a bit of that has to do with that as well, which is to be expected. But as you can see, our numbers overall have trended in a very good direction since the holiday break. And as of today, like I said, reporting in the portal, we have three cases, one at the primary school and two at the academy. So we still need to wear masks. The CDC did release that if you've had the vaccination or have had COVID, you can gather in your home without masks with other people. That doesn't apply to school. It's still, the masks in a public place is still about most important. In fact, I'll share some information in a bit, that, you know, the science is pointing to the fact that the mask is, is, is a major factor in controlling the spread of COVID. So, we are saying, continue to do preventative measures, wear a mask, wash your hands, socially distance, and, and, you know, wiping down hard surfaces and things like that. So what's needed for a full reopening, you probably saw, I know you saw, because I shared it with you on Friday, the CDC released new guidance that moved the six-foot measurement to three feet in schools. And a lot of that was based on a study that was done in Massachusetts that I also have shared with the community that really showed there's, there's no discernible difference in transmission rates between three feet of distancing versus six foot of distancing when wearing masks. And a lot, like I'll go back to, the science continues to show that COVID is transmitted through the air, through the aerosols in the air. There is not a lot of evidence that's really showing that COVID is transmitted through surfaces. All right. And so, you know, we think about some of the things we've done this year where we, we clean hard surfaces between individual youths. So if I'm in a science, if I'm a science teacher, and we have two kids using a beaker, we clean it before the next person uses it. All right, clean between individual youths. That really changes the way you teach. You know, you have to slow things down a little bit. You have to be much more thoughtful about time that it takes to do those things. We also are cleaning high-touch surfaces consistently throughout the day, doorknobs and things, pushbars and things like that. And we continue to do that. But maybe the science is pointing to the fact that, is it as essential as we thought? We've, we're also quarantining library books for a week, essentially. And so, it, it's really making us rethink some of those things, but no changes have been made. I just want to be clear about that. We're just kind of following the research and trying to learn more about it. Oh, so I talked about that a bit. Sorry about that. So what we're hearing is, as you know, a couple of weeks ago, Dr. Fauci, over the weekend, alluded to, he felt like CDC guidance was coming soon, new guidance was coming soon, and it did. He, he made that statement, I think, on a Saturday or Sunday. And then the Friday following, CDC guidance came about. Dr. Zucker, he speaks for the New York State Department of Health. He has also been saying over and over again that new guidance is coming soon. The unfortunate part is he started saying that about four weeks ago now, and said it would be probably within a week. I mean, he was pressed to say a week. He was reluctant to say a week. But he, you know, he did say a week, and, and here we are on four weeks, which is substantially longer than that. And then Dr. Mendoza in Monroe County released a letter and a press release on Friday of last week. And I didn't, I didn't end up sharing that with you. We're not in Monroe County, but it's out there for public consumption where he urges the New York State Department of Health to revisit the guidelines and adopt fully the CDC guidelines, is how it was worded. In the meantime, he has created some guidance documents for schools to follow that he has not made public that does align closely with the CDC, which leads me to believe that maybe he knew some of the stuff was coming and what some of that verbiage was in his role. Maybe he's privy to that beforehand. And so, you know, that's really pushed our thinking a bit. And then Ontario County Public Health, they are supportive of schools' efforts to fully reopen. They're supportive of what CDC is saying, but they do not believe they have the authority to make any kind of change in protocol without the New York State Department of Health authorizing that. And it's a little bit funny because last week, this was actually on the New York State Department of Health website, and I underlined the last line that just said that determinations are purview of the county health departments. And this is in reference to the six feet versus three feet. And I've shared this with our local public health, and they're great. Let me just be clear. They're great. They're very supportive. They want to work with us, but they're getting mixed messages. They're getting mixed messages from the state and from things like this that are saying two totally separate things. And for those of us that have been knee-deep in the weeds since August and July, that doesn't come as a surprise. We've been getting mixed messages since this began. And so I, I feel bad for the position they're in. People are seeing this and pressuring our, our local public health. Believe me, they want to help us, but they also don't want to do something that's going to cause them trouble from our state Department of Health. And so they're really, you know, they're, they're in a tough situation, and I certainly respect and acknowledge that. So here's what CDC basically says, and I, and I won't go into all the details. I'll talk about that with a little bit of our reopening plan concepts. And again, I'll say that these are just concepts. We can't even make this happen unless more things can happen from the state level, so more leniency can come our way. And so I just want to preface that, and I'll say that multiple times probably. But the CDC is saying, in elementary schools, kids can be three feet apart in the classroom as long as they're wearing masks. And they're saying that can happen in low, moderate, or high risk. Doesn't matter how much your transmission is in your community. The CDC thinks the elementary, primary elementary school kids can be back at three feet, which I think was funny. If you watched 60 Minutes last night, some of the data they showed is the primary elementary kids, the transmission is higher than the secondary. And so again, here we go with this conflicting information, this conflicting research that makes it really hard to navigate. But at the middle and high school level, they can also be returned at three feet according to CDC so long as your community is low, moderate, or substantial risk category, not high risk. If you're determined to be high risk, you have to shift, shift back to six feet. And I'll let you know, according to Mary Beer, on Friday of last week, we were still in what would, would be categorized by CDC standards as substantial risk. So substantial risk does allow, would allow us by CDC standards to return at three feet. But, you know, we're close to that high-risk cutoff as well. And so people find that surprising. You know, we're doing well in the region. Our numbers are coming down. But by CDC standards, we're barely into the substantial category. And so that, I just summarized what's on this page. I wasn't about to read it all to you. So also in the document that Dr. Mendoza was working on and hasn't released, and I hope he does eventually, if things start to loosen up, because I thought it was really founded in common sense. And it really gave some ability to make decisions that make sense for each community. And so, Um, and it really gave some uh, ability to make decisions that make sense for each community. And so uh, some personalization. But he alluded to it and in the CDC document, they alluded to these mitigating strategies or mitigating measures that you could put in place to help reduce our risk of transmission. And they're listed here, but really notably, and you know this, we were about to order about fifty thousand dollars worth of barriers last week. And the truth of the matter is, the reason we've been not wanting to do that all year long is we, we don't believe they do anything. You know, think back to what I said earlier, uh, COVID is transmitted through the air and um, not necessarily on the surface. And so if I have a, a plastic barrier like this in front of me and I'm breathing, aerosols are going above it, around it and everything. They're not, they're not captured within the barrier unless we have a barrier where we kind of put people in a bubble and zip them in. Um, you know, a barrier does very little to nothing. And so CDC removed the barrier concept from their guidance. Uh, and again, conflicting evidence. We have counties across the state that are saying buy barriers and reopen at three feet and we'll reimburse you for those barriers. And so when community members hear that, they think, well, barriers are the answer. They only make you feel better. They only make you feel safer, in my opinion. Again, I don't, that's my opinion. Uh, but other, other measures, um, increased ventilation systems, which we've done all along, you know that, we update you almost every board meeting. Jen does. Uh, Dr. Jen does. We, uh, we open windows, as you know, oftentimes, I mean, here freezing during these board meetings because you know, Deb and my windows are open. It's nice out now, so I like it even better. But we, we've had them open all year long and many of our teachers and staff have as well. Uh, air purification systems, we have uh, installed some of these throughout the district. We would consider installing more in like cafeterias and things like that if we move forward with reopening. And we have some quotes on those. Uh, they are scientifically proven to be valid and effective. Um, cohorting and podding, and I'll talk a little bit about that later on, but that's an important piece that um, you know, there's some ambiguity around it, but I think it has potential and, and I just want to talk about what that looks like. Of course, masking, I've talked about distancing, three feet, six feet, as many feet as possible, uh, doing those things, hand washing, cleaning, disinfecting, and then health screening, contact tracing. So many of these things we're already doing, but just a reminder. And so our goal is ultimately, we need to get back to normal eventually, whether it's five days of virtual synchronous learning or five days of in-person. We, we want to be back here. But at this point, you know, we need the New York State Department of Health to give some guidance. Uh, in fact, this evening, if you looked at the Democrat Chronicle, there was an article um, from the super, well, it was an article in the paper, the president of the superintendents in Monroe County is a superintendent at Grease, uh, Mrs. Groudmann, Dr. Groudmann. And she indicated that Monroe County schools are moving forward with planning for a full reopening. What people seem to confuse is this whole notion of I'm planning for reopening is that's a, a line in the sand where we're reopening on that date. And that's not what m- many schools are saying right now. Very few are saying that. They're saying we're planning to reopen, but we need to get authorization. We need to have support from the local department of health, the New York State Department of Health, or the local department of health and CDC, whatever combination that is, they need authorization and support to do that. I did talk on the phone with our uh, legal counsel today and asked the question, you know, who, who do we technically have to follow? CPC, New York State Department of Health, our local public health? And without even really hesitating, uh, they indicated the, the New York State Department of Health. That's who you should be following. They've created rules and you may be opening yourself up to liability if um, you don't have LA, your local department of health or your New York State Department of Health um, supporting your efforts in supporting the plan. Dr. Groudmann also said, you know, the state could reject these plans, you know, they could create reopening plans and the state could say, no, that doesn't meet our guidelines. It's, you, you can't reopen fully. And so there's just so much still up in the air. Uh, and, and um, schools have been put in a tough spot. Also, you know, people uh, kind of sometimes read or hear what they want to hear or what they think they hear. They get kind of confused with the details and uh, this weekend I was getting a lot of text messages from some of our staff. I was getting emails from community members saying so-and-so's opening on this date, so-and-so's opening on this date. And they're usually pretty surprised that I'm, I'm actually friends with almost all the superintendents. And so I'll shoot them a text and say, did you say you're opening on this date? And I'll say, no, we said, we hope to if, big if, we can, if we're allowed to. You know, that's, we're planning for it. And so that's what I'm here presenting to all of you is, you know, I'd like to be planning for a full reopening. I think the CDC gave us enough information where we kind of see where it might go. And then therefore we will be able to, to plan for and anticipate. I'd rather anticipate than react if possible. And I'll acknowledge anticipating and putting work into it could be wasted effort. It could be, but um, I think it would be worthwhile so that we're prepared if it can happen. So uh, again, at this point, what I'm saying is we would put a survey out after our board meeting tonight, if people are kind of on board here and this makes sense to follow this procedure. I would host a, two forums tomorrow, uh, one at three forty-five, really targeted at staff, anybody can come. And then one in the evening, I think, I think it's done here in the later slide, but I think it's six or six thirty and that would be more for the community. And I would present this exact same presentation to help people understand where we are and why we're here and what these reopening, what it might look like. So that they can make a selection to finish the year. Uh, you know, they could say, I want to be, if we're going to come back fully in person, I want to be fully in person. Or I'd like to finish the year virtually or remote. People could change or stay the same. It's their choice. They'll also be in that survey, a survey for staff. And, and we would ask them, have you, did you get the vaccine? Uh, the governor did issue an executive order where we are supposed to be collecting that information and submitting it through the Department of Health, but they've given us no mechanism to do it. So we've been reluctant, but since the survey is going out, what I'd be inclined to do in there is for peace of mind, I'll put that question in there for staff. And the answers could be yes, I, I have both, both doses or uh, I'm fully vaccinated or yes, I have the first shot. Um, no, or I, I care not to answer. You know, something like that right now. Um, because that might give us a general sense. And then also for staff, they could put in there, do they want to be considered to be a virtual teacher to finish the year or in person? And we will do our very best to accommodate it. We've been able to so, so far, for the most part, we've really done a nice job. Thank you, Brian Knoll, for making that happen and all the principals. Um, and then, but the parents could pick, you know, five days a week in person or virtual to finish the year. Here's the interesting thing. This document you're seeing is the same document pretty much we've used all along since August. We built it that way on purpose. And so the only difference is if you pick virtual, it's a hundred percent instruction remotely synchronously Monday through Friday. Currently, it's Monday, Tuesday, uh, Thursday, Friday. We would change it to five days a week. This is the exact same piece over here. And when people, if you think back to August, when people picked their selection, they picked in-person learning. But because of the, the rules we have to follow with the state, it put us in the middle, hybrid learning. And I said all along, this is a continuum. If those rules loosen, we might be able to bump it up here to fully in-person, five days a week. Or if the infection rates get bad and the, and the rules get uh, become more strict, it might bump down to fully remote. You know, this was something I said, I don't know how many times at forum. So it, it shouldn't be new to people. It really was our plan all along. And so they would be picking this piece if the rules will allow for it. And so really, you know, this week is more about educating, informing, learning, reading the CDC guidance, trying to anticipate. Uh, putting the survey out there, having it due Monday of next week in the morning. Hopefully people will fill it out by Friday. That would be really helpful. Um, because our principals need to have that and directors in hand so they can start comparing who's switching and how much we're working of our calendar do we, or our schedule do we need to do. Um, and then hopefully we'll work on that for two to three weeks. And then be prepared for a full reopening anytime between Monday, April nineteenth to Monday, May seventeenth, in that timeframe. The reason I suggest that timeframe, um, I think April nineteenth is probably the size of our district, the earliest we could be ready. And, and that's a hopeful, that's a hopeful piece. And it's the full fourth quarter, you know, so that would give a full um, ten weeks of instruction in person. But I want to preface that by saying, if we were to do that and, and reopen fully, I don't want staff or parents to think, oh, great, we can hit the ground running with instruction and just really hammer it out for the rest of the year because we need to onboard people. We need to re-acclimate people. We need to be there to provide SEL support. We haven't been in school for over a year. And there'll be a lot more work to do than just hit the ground running with instruction. And the first thing we need to take care of, of is people's social, uh, emotional, mental health. Uh, that'll be of utmost importance. And so in the reason I kind of say May seventeenth is the last date, that would only give us five weeks of in-person instruction. Uh, anything less than five weeks is going to cause a sign, this will be a significant disruption in a lot of ways. Uh, anything less than five weeks, I worry, um, you know, we shouldn't be so disruptive in the middle of a quarter at the end of the year. And guess what? Part of that, you have New York State assessments three through eight, which I'll talk about in a minute, and regions exams. There's a lot of pieces in there that uh, would also be a disruption. And so really it's us trying to prepare, anticipate based on what we're hearing and plan such that if the rules do change and we have certain public support in the Department of Health, that we would be ready to leverage and start in-person anywhere between that timeframe, April nineteenth to May seventeenth. So what would it look like? And this is based on what I'm hearing from people like Dr. Mendoza, the CDC. Um, this is the piece that people are going to need to know so they can make their selections. One, in classrooms, you see a picture here where classes, they're spaced out six feet. It would be three feet. So three feet is measured the same way six was, really middle of desk to middle of desk or middle of seat to middle of seat. What you'll see is it's actually um, that's a normal distance. In fact, normally the way we set up classrooms are a little bit larger than three feet. The, the difficulty is where there are desks, you know, we, or tables, I'm sorry. A lot of teachers have moved away from desks because, you know, tables are more collaborative, more conversational, and there's a lot of great things that can happen with that. So that is, that's a problem. Um, but with a table, if you have students at either end of the table, you can have still that three feet in between them. So what I'm telling you is our principals are working and they'll make certain that in classrooms, students will be three feet apart. In the cafeteria, this is where I want to talk about this whole pod cohort system. Again, it's a little bit ambiguous. It's a little bit vague. Um, I've, I've talked this out with some uh, Department of Health directors. I've talked this out with, with our um, legal counsel and a variety of people. And just to say, check my thinking. Does this seem to kind of match what the language is saying and would this work? And the answer has been yes. And so the document in CDC alludes to pods and cohorting. Dr. Mendoza as well. The concept is this, um, you, in the cafeteria, you, you, you could use your tables as normal and have students assigned to the tables. That is your assigned pod. That is your assigned cohort. Such that it, and you sit there each time you have lunch, so that if there was an exposure, the exposure would be limited to those kids at that pod only. And it would help with contact tracing and it would keep it contained more so. Uh, and so again, that would be the concept that we're currently sure we could do. We, we could make that happen. Uh, one of the things we are in the process of working on, but it is not easy because CDC does also say when they're eating, their masks often need to be at six feet. But the next sentence, it references this cohorting and pod thing. And it says, you can cohort and pod and keep six feet between the cohorts and pods. So in other words, if I have a table that's a cohort, the next table has to be six feet away. So it doesn't impact them. Uh, and that's what it looks like. But we are working on concepts of uh, doing lunches at six feet and using every possible space we can find. Uh, we are worried about our ability to monitor and supervise those, all those extra spaces, but we're working on it in hopes that this plan A with the pods and cohorting could work and people understand it and agree to it. Um, if not, plan B, can we, can we do this six foot thing? Um, and, and we have a lot of things we're looking at for that. With busing, in the CDC guidance, it says one per seat or six feet where possible. All right. So where possible, the language tells me that maybe not always it will be possible. What I can tell you is Seth and his team has done a great job pulling um, attendance numbers on the bus. We have fifty-nine runs right now. Of those fifty-nine, forty of them, if the parents will continue to drive at the rate that they're currently driving, forty of them will be easily within one per seat, which is what we're currently doing, out of the fifty-nine. Five of them might be slightly over. Um, but if they're in the same household, they can sit together. So it doesn't account for that. And so um, five of those have five over the, what it would take. So we have twenty-four seats in a bus. Uh, and so um, forty of the fifty-nine are at twenty-four or less. Um, five of them are at twenty-five to thirty. And so if they're from the same household, they can sit together. So very likely those five, so um, would be compliant. So forty-five out of the fifty-nine. And then our largest is fifty-nine. Uh, we only have two buses that are in the fifties. And um, one's fifty-two and one's fifty-nine, if they came together. And so what that would mean though, if you're doing the math, is no more than two in a seat, which is still favorable, number one. Number two, it's what many schools in Monroe County have been doing all along. Uh, they, they went forward with that um, process with transportation. And uh, I talked to them constantly. We're not in Monroe County, but our size is more like them. I talk to them all the time and they have not had busing issues. And in the words of Dr. Mendoza, when they shared that data, he said, I don't think we need any more data then. You just proved that it's safe. So um, I think the CDC document gives us a little bit of latitude and our numbers are fairly favorable on those buses as is. Dismissal at PES is uh, that the new product is great to dismiss kids, but it takes time. It's about a half an hour uh, to dismiss. And so one of the proposals we're working on at dismissal is a cherry and a gray dismissal. And we would rotate it by week so that everybody had a fair opportunity at normal dismissal time. So in other words, cherry would dismiss this week at normal time if they're getting picked up by a parent. And then gray during the same week would dismiss a half an hour later. And what we would do is we would work with staff and we would pay staff to stay late and supervise the gray group in different locations throughout the building to help coordinate dismissal. And then the next week we would flop it and, and gray would dismiss at normal time if it's getting picked up by parents and cherry would get dismissed a half an hour later. Um, it would take about an hour to do all at once and we'd prefer not to have people waiting in a car in line for an hour. Uh, it would back up onto the streets and really cause congestion, but doing it this way, we think could manage it um, in, in an easier um, fashion. We don't anticipate there being an issue at the middle school or academy any more than normal. Uh, you know, so far it's been really great and we hope it would stay that way, even if we doubled the capacity. Um, shared equipment, we're still looking for guidance on this, but what I can tell you is I'm going to combine phys ed and shared equipment together because, you know, that's a place that they share. There, there's a lot of equipment and they've really been restricted in what they can do. In the CDC guidance, it's talking about um, cleaning equipment between cohorts and groups, not individual use. And so if I'm, if we're playing tennis in phys ed, we have limited tennis racket, let's pretend. Um, before I give it to somebody else to use, I have to clean it if it's during class. But now we would only clean it at the end of class before the next cohort comes in. Uh, this is the CDC guidance. Again, we're still waiting on New York State Department of Health to weigh in, but that's what they're suggesting. And uh, in talking with um, our cult for PE and health today, I said, would that be, would that be helpful if we moved to that? And she said, more helpful than you would ever imagine. That would really change our lives for the better. Um, I also asked, CDC says six feet with a mask in phys ed instead of twelve feet. And they would, they would welcome that with open arms from what I was told from um, our, our PE cult. And really where they're saying that from is, you know, sports have proven that they can do it safely. You know, those are, and out of season training, those are the protocols they're following currently and it's working. Um, and same with band and chorus. You, you know, you saw it tonight, some of our musicians performing with their performance masks on. And you know that uh, this is something we've advocated for a while. Right now, our extrapricular performing arts groups are allowed to perform at six feet with masks and bell covers. And we have our local department of health who has agreed, if we have no issues with that and no outbreaks from that, that for fourth quarter, starting April nineteenth, we can do that for um, credit bearing music classes. So general music classes and things like that move to six feet. And so everybody's really excited about that. And we're happy to hear that it also matches the CDC guidance. Um, and so really, uh, people need, need to know, if you're switching learning models, probably switching teachers. You know, so if you're going to virtual to in-person or in-person to virtual, you're probably going to switch teachers. That's most likely going to happen. Um, at the, at the middle school and academy, you may not be able to take some of the classes. If you remember uh, when people selected virtual, we couldn't offer every class in a virtual format. We tried our best to accommodate, but we couldn't offer all of them. And people just need to be aware of those things. And they would need to be able to, they can make their selection. They can, we can build the schedule and say, this is what it would look like. And then they could say, you know, that's too much disruption. Uh, uh, let's just finish the way we are. You know, they, they could have that saying. But people do need to know that, you know, changes could happen. Um, regardless, there could be changes in people because right now we have about twenty percent of our folks that are learning uh, virtually. Because right now, we have about 20% of our folks that are learning, uh, virtually. What if that number went to 35? What if it went to, uh, 10? You know, we have to shift staff to match that. Also, uh, we have a great, uh, SEL team. And so, you know, they'll be, our counselors, our social workers, our psychologists, our prevention specialists, they'll be there to really be there for our students and our staff through this whole process, we'll be working closely with them. Uh, state assessments, three through eight, uh, math and ELA assessments are still on. All we have is session one. When, there's not a session two, like there has been in the past. So it'll be a one day, session one, uh, and it's all multiple choice, I believe. And they've taken out all of the, um, the field test questions, they're no longer in there. Uh, so it'll be a shortened version. Regents exams, the four regents are still on, although we've submitted a waiver, and we'll wait and see if it changes between now and then. We're working on plans for commencement, commencement, the ball, the prom, all kind of still up in the air, but we're watching closely. And then there's been no changes with athletics. It's, it's still the same. We heard a little bit of a push last week when the governor said, uh, professional sports can have X number of people at their stadiums and venues and things like that. Um, people said, "Can we go to more than just two fans per athlete?" Um, but that's not changed, that's the same still. Spring break is next week, and we have a whole lot of kids coming to school in spring break, uh, at the grade six through 12. So we're calling it intercession, and it'll be, uh, working on doing the work and helping kids catch up and learn. Uh, we have, we have a lot of students volunteering to be there and help as well. Uh, not for themselves to be doing work, but helping their peers. I think we had like 60 volunteer, if I'm not mistaken, maybe it was 30 something, I might have exaggerated. Um, we're looking to expand intervention services to after school, uh, maybe till Wednesdays and things like that for folks. And so we're working through those plans right now and trying to coordinate all the logistics. We're really looking at interesting concepts for summer school, uh, where it's totally different and available to way more families and children than ever before. Um, we're also looking at things for themed weeks. Maybe we do a robotics week, and it's focused on math and science. But also, we have our robotics teacher and, and kids there to show that. Literacy week, where we have someone, um, that's passionate about poetry, come and work with our kids, but focus on language arts. And so, um, and people can sign up for certain weeks. And so we're really looking to expand this and thinking out of the box, knowing that federal dollars are likely coming our way for it. And then next year, um, because we believe we'll have some federal dollars for a few years, focused on gap recovery, can we expand before and after school program? And can we learn from other schools around us that have substantial grants and have built out these programs for many years now? Uh, we'll be meeting with them and hearing from what, from them, what their, their programs look like, and what can we mimic and bring here, uh, for next year for our students. And so these plans still go forward. So if, if this sounds reasonable, you know, to continue to plan and prepare, I'll host two forums tomorrow, one at 3:45 and one at 6:00. We'll put a survey out, uh, I think that's the next slide. We'll put a survey out on Wednesday morning and have it due on the following Monday. And that way, the principals and directors can start planning and thinking, and they'll work with their counselors after break to start planning for it. Um, and I'd be remiss if I didn't say, this has been tough. It's been really hard. And I fully know that no matter what we decide, people are going to be disappointed, upset, maybe even angry. It's not a position I envy being in, it's not a position I'm thankful that any of you are in. However, I am thankful that you're in it with me, uh, because, uh, you, you know, you've been a great sounding board, you're so thoughtful and supportive, and, and I really appreciate that. And so, I've talked a very long time, which I don't normally like to do. I'm gonna stop sharing my screen, and I'm going to ask you for reflections, thoughts, feedback.
Michelle.
Yeah, first, Jamie, thank you for your presentation. And I know we've talked about this several times, but there isn't gonna be a win-win here because of, you know, we're balancing parents and, and students who want to be 100% back versus families that are still very, very nervous. And I think we have to continue to plan for the unexpected, particularly after, you know, we, we have no idea what's gonna happen after spring break. So for those hundreds of you that are listening, we just need to remind you to make good choices, right? And, um, you know, kind of an obvious statement, but, but those are the kinds of things that will, even if we get the go-ahead, will trip us up. So this is, uh, we're all in it together as a community. And thanks again for your leadership and hard work on this, Jamie. I know sometimes it feels like a thankless job, but you are appreciated, and so is your team.
Well said, thank you, Michelle. Questions, John?
Echoing what Michelle said, which I usually don't like to do, but I'll do tonight. Uh, yes, like I was joking with you before, you know, what's, once we all go back, what are you gonna do? Uh, you know, you're not gonna get 100 emails a day and everything else. But my concern is New York State, obviously. You'll get a broad announcement, but no, no directive, most likely, no details in their announcement. And what, um, what, uh, did we hear? Anything as whether or not hybrid is out, um, 100% online can still be offered? Is there an outside chance New York State can come in and say, "Everyone has to go back full-time"? Or, District, you can offer all three models?
Yeah, those are great questions. Uh, I would be surprised by anything anymore, to be honest with you. Uh, I don't think we have the capacity and flexibility to offer all three, I just don't. I don't think we can do hybrid, in-person, and virtual. Um, this shift alone is going to be difficult for our staff. And, and you're, you're struggling, I mean, it's been a struggle all year long, and it's so challenging. Um, and so, I do think we'll be able to continue to offer virtual for the rest of this year. I'd be shocked if they did away with that. I, I'm almost thinking they're probably going to make us, uh, offer it next year as well. Uh, we'll see, I mean, time will tell, I, I don't really know, it's hard to project. Um, today, the governor was asked in his second presser about the CDC guidance, and will New York State move it from six feet to three feet? And he really was kind of aloof about it, didn't even, didn't seem to even know what was in the CDC guidance, and had to defer to some of his team members to, to respond to it, which was disappointing. Um, this morning, California did move their entire state to three feet, which I thought was positive news for us, um, you know, in a lot of ways, if you follow politics. But I, I worry about that too, John. And, you know, it's interesting, early last week, there seemed to be so much energy and support from the Department of Health locally, Monroe, Ontario, a variety of them. Where, you know, change is coming, CDC, maybe it's coming. And then I would, all I can say, over the weekend, it just felt like people were getting cold feet. And so I asked, you know, "What is that about?" And I said, "Is there, would there be something coming from the state that would cause local folks to have cold feet?" And all I got for a response is a singular word, "Yes." And they wouldn't, they didn't have a li- liberty to elaborate. But if you can read between the lines, it, it sounds like our local leaders feel like we're at a point where we can start to reopen, but something is happening where they're not getting the go-ahead from the state level, and they're a little bit worried about it, without their, without their endorsement. That, that's concerning, it is.
Just to clarify, um, in order to continue virtual learning next year, we do need state approval. That's not, that's not a local decision. So I, I think that just bears repeating now, we don't get to make that decision because of seat time.
Correct, thank you.
Other questions or comments or concerns? Jen?
Um, I'm just gonna start with some logistics challenges that I, I wonder about. You mentioned, uh, pods and cohorts for cafeteria time, for example. Do you expect that students would be able to have any input, or families, any input into that? Part of the reason why I'm thinking about that is certain families already have established pseudo-pods outside of school. So if we were to randomly assign kids to a pod, but those kids don't see each other outside of the school building, we actually might be actually fighting exposure that's already happening, or adding to exposure that's already happening. I certainly wouldn't want children to, to be pushed aside or not chosen. So I'm, I'm also a little worried about that. But I see some efficacy in allowing families to say, you know, "We've chosen to have, this family is part of our family pod, so it may make sense to have kids sit together anyway, because they're already doing it on a Saturday night or something."
You're, you're clearly in my office, and Brian and I were talking earlier today, because that's exactly what we talked about, it's tough. You know, we do have families that have kind of, they're, this is our circle, or this is our sphere, and, and they interact with their family. And, you know, why, that makes sense, to have them together, but to your point as well. Then we have to deal with the whole, um, the, you know, feeling of left out piece as well. But we, I think we can navigate that, I think we can, we have great staff, and it makes perfect sense. Busing too.
So to, to go along with that, um, we are one of those families that, that transports our kids two days a week. And I probably shouldn't say this on the internet, but I already see some sort of rock, paper, scissors thing that's gonna go on in the Snyder House when it goes to five days a week. That's a lot to manage. So I'm not sure that all families would be capable of staying in the same mode that they are when you increase the number of trips that need to be taken. So I think that that's something that we really need to get both clarity and some solid numbers to understand what capacities might be. And if I swing by and pick up my kids, that'd be great too.
Thanks, Jen, and Deb knows that. Um, I felt compelled, you know, we were asking our parents to drive their kids to school. I have three kids here myself, and I've committed to driving them to school every day. And it's tough, you know, I, I come in, I work, I go, I drive them, and I come back and work, and it extends my day. It, it's tough, but I felt it was important that, you know, if we're asking parents to do this, I'm a parent here too, and, and I'm gonna find a way to do it. And I thank, you know, everybody for allowing me to try to make that happen. But I get it, it's, it's really challenging, and I work here, so it's probably less challenging for me um, versus other people. And yeah, that's noted.
Other questions or comments, Julianne?
Have we thought about, for lunch in particular? Because that seems to be one of the logistical challenges with the, with, obviously, they don't have masks on. Have we thought about, especially given the time of year, utilizing outdoor space for lunch? Where, you know, either with tents or something like that? The way, you know, we, we did some of the outdoor classrooms in the fall, and we're sort of lucky in terms of when this could even have the potential to start. You're likely to have more good weather than bad, though I've now probably jinxed it. Um, have we, have we thought about utilizing that as well?
We have, actually. Hold on, Julie, I'm gonna mute you just 'cause there was feedback there, I apologize. Uh, we have talked about utilizing open, um, outdoor spaces. For example, at the primary elementary school, or at least I'll say the elementary, they've been trying to take them outside on nice days, you know, but we do live in central western New York, and, and the weather doesn't always cooperate, which makes it tough. I did talk to the city about tents. Um, you know, we could do it, we'd have to have the fire chief or the fire department inspect it and certify it, and we'd also have to have SED approve it. And nothing SED is fast anymore, uh, they're ordering, they're, you know, they're, they work remotely, and you can't call them, makes it, it makes it challenging. And I'll, I'm just gonna be honest, I don't think tents are, they're a temporary solution, and we need to figure out more permanent solutions. Um, and so really, that's a challenge we're working on right now, is how can we do this within our own structures and with our own spaces? But it's going to create hardship, it's going to displace people, uh, during lunches. If the, you know, I was even, I'll just, we were, all, no ideas were off the table. And I was talking, you know, those little foam pads that you kneel on for, uh, gardening? I said, "What if we order, at the primary elementary, we order one of those for all kids, and then we find like a little plastic bin that they flipped upside down, they put their tray on, they could sit in the gymnasium." You know, we were just thinking out of the box, because, you know, and then you can stack them or disinfect them, and... You know, I think we have to try to create, we've been thinking as creatively as we can. Um, but yes, we, we would intend to bring them outside on nice days if we could, and we could supervise it, that's the other challenge. The more spaces, the more supervision you need.
Jen?
I, I would like to support Julianne's idea. I, you know, the more that we could get kids outside, if it's a decent day, or even if it's not so great a day, we all live in western New York. We, we've learned to survive when it's not a great day. Um, get kids outside, then you're, you're not building any potential concentration in the school. You, you've got an ultimate ability to space them out. I understand all the challenges, but I think that's something we're really thinking about, even if we're not able to get a tent on the property.
Yes, thank you.
Megan?
Has there been any discussion about, like, children who buy lunch, maybe eating in the cafeteria versus children who bring lunch staying in the classroom? I mean, I know staffing, that might cause an issue, but I feel like that would spread them out enough where maybe you'd be able to have enough distance between them, um, where, you know, that would help.
Thanks, Megan. Uh, so that would be really, as you know, specifically the primary elementary school, for the most part. It would create, um, a cohorting issue a little bit to a degree. We'd have to keep the cohort six feet away. But, um, one of the conversations we had with Mr. Amesbury at the elementary school is combination of in-classroom, outside. And because kids haven't eaten in the cafeteria at all this year, to do a rotation where they all get an experience eating in the cafeteria. And so maybe a couple of classes, and they're spread out. And so really kind of looking at different options where they could rotate them through. Uh, so that's kind of similar to what, I think it's similar to what you were saying about there, Megan. One thing I wanted to mention too, that I, I might have forgotten, and I've been checking my phone to see if somebody texted me that I forgot something. Um, I did get a confirmation that it was 36 student volunteers, uh, for intercession, although another administrator said it was 78. So it's somewhere between 36 and 78. Um, but the students have to be separated by three feet. The adults have to be six feet, by CDC guidance. I can't remember if I said that. You know, if you think about a classroom, and the teacher's instructional space at the board, and then the students are at their tables or desks, certainly, there's usually six feet of separation. Now, they could go closer to, quickly to, you know, demonstrate something, but then back to their teaching zone. Kind of what they've been doing all year long.
Other questions? Milton?
So, so Jamie, you, you alluded to this earlier about some of the strategies for addressing some of the shortcomings this seat, this year with, uh, funds from the Recovery Act. Do any of the costs associated with reopening, are they gonna be able to be, um, supported by the, by any of those Recovery Acts, or no?
See Matt Pitch reaching for his mute button, go ahead, Matt.
Simple answer, Milton, is, uh, we don't know. Um, we really don't, we don't know what our allocation will be for the American Recovery Act still. I know there's numbers that have been published out there, um, you know, some estimates. Um, we don't know what those numbers really are going to be. Um, we have not been told what we can use the funds for. Um, you know, so it's, that's part of the waiting game, as part, as part of the state budget process, and waiting for additional information on, on how these grants can be used.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments, or concerns? Are we okay then giving Jamie the go-ahead to have the forums and to proceed with this absolutely mind-boggling plan that has been presented and conceived really, really well? So, um, our thanks to everybody who was a part of it. Um, and our thanks in advance, and our very sincere request for a massive amount of patience as we move forward in this. Um, I, I think for those listening, you've gotten a very small glimpse of all of the work that goes in behind this. Um, and so, um, there, there's just so much more than meets the eye. And the health and the well-being of our children is number one here, and that's what we're trying to do. So even when it feels terrible in your own home, we are getting feedback that's very different, uh, you know, sort of across the spectrum of feelings and experiences and emotions. Um, and the bottom line for us, in addition to wanting to respond to all of that and honor all of it, is that we have to follow these guidelines. Um, a lot of the emails that I get have some version of, uh, "Why don't you just stand up to the governor, you know, do what you want to do, do..." And we simply cannot do that. We are, we hold the district sacred. And it is our responsibility to be stewards of the district. Uh, and so we can't do those sorts of things, even though in our fantasy lives, there are many things we would like to do. Uh, but we don't have that choice as a district. And so we beg you to be patient in this very, very challenging journey that we have ahead of us. Uh, we are truly trying to be in it all together. Um, and that is, that guarantees our success. So thank you, thank you so much, Jamie, and everyone on the team that has contributed to all of this. Um, Michelle?
Sorry, one more thing is, for those...
Sorry. One more thing is for those of you who have sent in messages to talk to the board. Just so you know, all of the board members, we, we see those, we read every single one of those. We take your, your input and your feedback very seriously. Jamie and Jeannie, as her role as president of the school board are the ones that are charged with responding. But we just want to know that your voices are being heard.
Thank you. Good reminder. Jamie, do you need anything else from us on this? John, I'm sorry.
Just a, a quick question. Jamie, are there any, with this survey, are there any scenarios where you say we couldn't do it? For example, a number of parents say they want to go back five days a week and a large number say they can't take their kids in five days a week. Is there a scenario where we, it's just physically impossible for this district to go back for five days if numbers play out a certain way?
Yeah, the difficulty will be if a lot of people change their, um, their instructional delivery model. It's going to create a complete rebuild of our master schedule and it will cause a lot of students to have to change teachers. Um, and so that will be that we might have to come back to the drawing table and say, hey, you know, this is, this may people, this is where we are now. And this is the disruption that it would create in what you're accustomed to. Uh, and we may need to revisit and say, i- is it worth continuing as a community? Do we want to continue and have that conversation as a board as well? But that would, that would be it. Um, from what I can tell, some districts have already sent those surveys, John. And thus far, the feedback is high 90% of folks stay with the same delivery model. Like 97, 98% are staying with the same delivery model to finish the year. So if that were the case, I, I would think we'd be fine to make, to prepare for that shift. So I think what I'm hearing is we'll do the forums tomorrow, we'll do the survey on Wednesday. And we will then begin plant, planning for a full reopening between April 19th and, uh, May 17th. So long as we can get the Department of Health endorsement for it.
Yes.
Okay. And, and I would just one more piece. I do want to thank, you know, we see all of you on here. Uh, the board, you, you, you've really been supportive and a great sounding board, day in and day out, and I appreciate that. Comment, we see Matt, Matt and Brian and Deb. Uh, I don't even know how I could get through this last year without those four. They are phenomenal. Uh, and, and I trust them implicitly. And you, what you probably don't see is daily they're running and trying to plan for things like what you saw here tonight. And, and, and coordinating and having conversations and working with teams. Uh, and, and their help is just so, so fantastic. Our entire leadership team, um, you know, we keep throwing bits of curveballs and we joke about it, but it's, it's exhausting. It's emotionally draining to change and to change gears over and over again and try to be responsive to, we don't even know what sometimes. Um, and then our staff, our students and our, our parents and community, you know, I couldn't imagine being in a more supportive, wonderful place. So thank you goes out to everybody. I hope the end is in sight and I hope normal can return as soon as possible. I'll quote, uh, Mike Prizanowski, when I met with him earlier, he's our CTA member. We just all want to get back to normal. We just all want to get back to normal.
Thank you, Jamie. Uh, let's see, Carlin. How are you tonight? Hi.
So there's nothing really new with, um, the difference with the like sports activities in school life. But there has been a lot of talk about the opening, reopening. And a lot of the questions that were brought to me were already addressed. But there is still some questions about whether reopening the younger schools would be like regarding reopening, if it would be different for the younger schools compared to the, like the high school and middle school. Cause there's again, that, just the disruption is what's really bothering people. And I know I've, we did kind of a mock survey in one of my classes just last week. And a majority of the students that I had talked to, it was really the younger kids that wanted to go back. And the older kids were like, I'm already struggling enough as it is. If I go with this huge change and have all of this stuff, they know that it's going to be a lot harder for them towards the end of the year. There's also the concern that if this were to happen, all the things that we've been able to get, like our extracurricular sports and extra choirs and things like that in the sound or being able to have a ball. Cause I know that's on the maps and a problem as well. If we reopen, something happens, some kind of spike happens, would all those things be canceled? And a lot of people are asking, you know, with this short amount of time left and when, and if this could happen, is it even worth doing it for that amount of time? So there's a lot of questions from the students too. And a lot of them are like, hey, could we have a survey too? Just to, so people could hear our voice as well. And you know, I was like, that would be an actually a pretty good idea. And you know, I'm, I'm pretty sure we're not going to have a bunch of primary elementary students filling out surveys about this. But you know, it would be worth hearing at least the middle school and high schoolers' voice on this. Because there is a lot of frustration, um, within the students too, about how they feel that they might succeed with this type of plan. And I know a lot of people are fearing that, you know, I'm already struggling to like pass my classes as it is. And with this type of change, I think it may not work. So it is, I think it may be worth hearing from the students too, not just the staff and the parents. Cause you know, parents are going to have a different idea from the kids, but it's worth hearing from them because it's affecting them too. So. Yeah. Other than that, there's nothing really new though.
That's all, huh, Carlin? Thank you. You actually, you, you said it perfectly. You actually, I, I hope we still have a lot of people watching right now because what you said is exactly what we're dealing with. We have people that feel total opposite ends of their beliefs on this, you know? Some people really want to be back and some really don't. I actually zoomed in with some classes. Some of our government classes and things like that. And they've been doing some unofficial surveys for me. You know, almost, it kind of goes with the tenor of the room. And so if someone's really outspoken, say, yeah, let's get us back, the whole room is for it. And if somebody, um, is not for it, like the, some of the cherry groups today were not for it. It, it kind of goes with that. And I think I will also say that I've looked at, uh, some other districts have done surveys of parents and staff and, and, uh, students about returning. And it's been really divided, you know, almost 50% to, you know, that 40 to 60% range. Um, it, it's been really divided and, and ultimately, um, I think what it boils down to, and I'm just going to say it for me. I think based on the rules we have to play, play by, we need to create what makes the most sense for an instructional model and, and try to, and try to make it work. By all means, if it's the, if it's the, um, the will of the board to survey students, staff and parents about whether they even want to reopen, we will do that. Um, very few districts are doing that now. They're just saying, look, we, you know, we're responding to the guidelines and trying to develop something and, and go, um, I know my three kids would say, don't bring us back. Um, and here I am as a dad and a superintendent doing, you know, they were arguing about it this weekend a little bit. And, uh, but it, you know, it's hard. It, it's just difficult. There's no right answer. And I think Michelle, um, said it perfectly. There's, there's no everybody wins scenario here right now. Your point's well taken though.
Julianne?
Um, I wonder if it would be possible to hear some of that feedback. Maybe not as a, you know, what should we do, but what to get more detail and allow the students to be heard about what their concerns are so that we can take those into account when planning, if we are planning for what that re-entry looks like and what that adjustment looks like. Certainly our middle and high school students are capable of telling us what their concerns are and what kinds of supports they might need. I know back in the summer, Jamie, you had a forum for students. Right? And I know attendance wasn't necessarily what we were hoping it was going to be. And, and maybe that's not the right format. But I think Carlin brings up an important point, which is that especially as we think about social emotional learning and that transition, frankly, whether we're able to do it this spring, if the guidance comes through with the way we need or in the fall, there's an opportunity to hear from those students what they need and what their concerns are as they make this really difficult transition after a really difficult year.
Milton?
I wonder if there's a role here for student government to play. Each class has their own governance, right? So why not have that opportunity to put them to that mix?
Go ahead, Carlin, go ahead.
Um, just one quick thing about the, like the class officers, people who are in charge of the grades right now. They're, all of them are going through a reelection type thing. All of them are being reelected. So I would either reach out to our main student government to do that. Or the groups that are not redoing elections, I would reach out to them because all of them are going through a big change right now. So I would not advise going to some of them right now at this moment, but it is an option. Yeah.
Politics, politics, they even work their way into our student body. These are great. These are great pieces. I've had, I have actually had some students reach out to me unsolicited, but that's great. And we've had great, really nice dialogue. Uh, I have a, you know, a few students that like to zoom with me often and, and share feedback, which, uh, I, I always enjoy doing. So these are all great ideas. Carlin, I really appreciate, uh, you bringing this up. And, uh, I, I, let me think about how to go about it. And it might be, um, I did get a request to attend another government class as well. So it might be something along those lines, you know, picking a, a content area and visiting those classes and hearing thoughts and concerns and recording it so we can respond to those. That, that might be the avenue to go. This is, this has all been very helpful and people know that I'm checking my texts. And so I'm getting a lot of texts from folks right now. Um, I'll just say that it's confirmed 78 volunteer students for intercession. So that's, that's great stuff. And at the forums, uh, tomorrow's forums, we'll send a message through Brave Square where people can, uh, have the link and follow them that way.
Megan?
I just had to say thank you to Carlin for bringing that up because I have children in almost every school. And I think her just bringing it up as a parent, it puts it in my brain to maybe talk to them a little bit more before I just immediately go and answer that survey because I do want it to be an easy, is not an easy transition, but I want it to be as easy as it can be for them. So it's just a good reminder for parents to maybe sit down and talk to their kids a little bit before they go answer that survey. And just jump to what they want to happen. Cause trust me, I want to send mine back right away. But you know, I think it's good to talk to them and find out what their worries are and what their feelings are about it first. So I appreciated that feedback.
Great. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you very much. Jamie, are you all set?
All set.
Okay. Uh, let's see, we have warrants up for review. I'll ask Cheryl and or Milton for a motion, please. Milton and Cheryl, questions or comments? All in favor? That carries unanimously, Deb. Uh, we have minutes up for approval. I'll ask for motions, please. Michelle and Beth, questions or comments? All in favor? That carries unanimously to Deb. And we have several votes, all of them are roll calls. So I'll ask for motions on the 2021 Capitol Outlay Project, the pump replacement at the academy. Motions, please. John Milton, questions or comments? Deb, whenever you're ready, please.
Mrs. Burks? Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Pedzik?
Yes.
Mrs. Personali?
Yes.
Mr. Palamini?
Yes.
Dr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Graham?
Yes, that carries, Deb. Our next one is the transportation purchase bond resolution. I'll ask for motions, please. Milton and Michelle, questions or comments? Deb, whenever you're ready, the roll call, please.
Mrs. Burks?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Pedzik?
Yes.
Mrs. Personali?
Yes.
Mr. Palamini?
Yes.
Dr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Graham?
Yes. And the final roll call is the transportation purchase resolution. I'll ask for motions, please. Cheryl and Megan, questions or comments? Whenever you're ready, please, Deb.
Mrs. Burks?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Pedzik?
Yes.
Mrs. Personali?
Yes.
Mr. Palamini?
Yes.
Dr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
And Mrs. Graham?
Yes.
Thank you. Let's see, we have a consensus agenda and several, oh, I, I went right past the budget reg, res, the presentation. And Matt, you are just sitting there smiling like you think you're off the hook for the night. Uh, why don't we come back to the consensus agenda supplemental and invite you to give your budget presentation?
Oh, thanks, Jamie.
You're welcome.
Mr. Far, uh,
I mean, I went, I apologize.
You, you should be able to share, Matt. If not, I can do it for you.
Y'all see the presentation there?
Yes, thank you.
All right. Well, good evening. And, um, so, you know, obviously we've, we've had a, a lot to talk about so far tonight. And, you know, just to camp it off with the budget presentation, um, this is usually where we have, um, our, our final presentation, you know, everything's really dialed in. And then, um, in our first meeting in April, you know, we make some final adjustments and adopt the budget. Might be a little bit different this year, um, with all the changes that are happening, um, potentially happening with state aid and the, the federal stimulus funds that are out there. So, uh, we'll talk through, you know, a similar presentation that we typically do. Um, but you know, talk through the areas also, um, that are, are still major areas that we're waiting for more information on. So we'll go through the tax levy, uh, limit and history, um, the different things that are driving the budget, both po- positively and negatively. Staffing changes and what's our current status and, and what the next steps are. The tax cap, uh, levy, um, the, the threshold this year is 2.07%. This is the lowest, um, that we have had. Um, and it's all caused by this allowable levy growth factor of 1.0 or 1.23%. So the, the levy limit is the greater, the lesser of 2% or the CPI. And the CPI this year happens to be 1.23%, which lowers our tax levy limit. So our tax levy limit, which is what we're going to show for this presentation to balance the budget, is approximately $985,000 increase. Tax levy history, the blue line is the tax cap. So what the actual calculation is. And the green line is the, uh, percentage that the district has increased the levy, um, in any year. So you can see that every year we've been either at or below mainly, um, almost every year below, uh, levy limit. We've never exceeded it. Uh, this year we don't anticipate needing to exceed that. And you see the green line does not go into 21, 22 at this point as, um, you know, we'll add that once we've made a formal, you know, guidance to the board and, and adopt the budget. But we don't anticipate needing to exceed it. The one concern we have here, and we've talked about this for the last couple of years, is you continually see this blue line trending down. And we can, as long as CPI stays low, as long as that consumer price index stays low, we can, uh, potentially see that not, um, you know, continue declining or remaining at a very low number. So some of the budget challenges, um, teachers retirement system, we're seeing an increase in their, um, the actual rate of 0.27%. Um, not a huge increase, um, but it is an increase and, and does result into some significant money. The big one for us this year are, is the health insurance. So a 10% increase in health insurance and the consortium is setting that rate, anticipating a loss with that 10% rate. And so next year, when we set rates for health insurance, we anticipate that number may be even higher. So this is a significant amount of, um, cost to the district. And, um, you know, a 10% raise is much higher than what we've seen the last several years. We've been in the zero to 5% range here for about four to five years now. We've been, uh, beating trend for, um, you know, what health insurance rates typically increase. Um, unfortunately, um, the experience that our consortium is, uh, facing right now, um, is, is not as good as trend. And so we're seeing those higher rate increases. Again, the tax cap of only 2.07%, that is, um, much smaller than, um, uh, we traditionally see. And then the other part here is on the revenue side, the foundation aid. And I'll talk about that here in a minute, but it's currently remaining flat at 2019, 20 levels. So that the, the foundation aid would be the same next year as it was last year and currently this year. And part of that is that there's $3.15 million that, of that is covered by the federal government. As part of their stimulus package. So just to put this in a different form, foundation aid, uh, in 1920, you can see here was $18,639,000. In the current year, it's still $18,639,000, but the state is only paying $18,100,000 of it. And the other is offset by the CARES Act, the first stimulus fund of $551,000. So that's how we're staying flat. Next year, as it's currently standing, is we would still be at a flat foundation aid, but the state would only be paying about fifteen point five million of that eighteen million six hundred thirty-nine thousand dollars. And three point one five million dollars would be federal funds. This is the second stimulus fu- funding, which was passed in December. Um, and so there's also the American Recovery Act, um, which is the most recent one passed as part of the one point nine trillion dollars. We're not exactly sure when we can use that, how we can use it, those types of things. This is the big piece of our budget this year that we're waiting on. Both the Assembly and the Senate, um, it within the state government have both said they don't agree with this reduction, similar to the gap elimination adjustment of a decade ago. And that foundation aid should stay flat or even increase. So this, you know, that's a very large amount of money, uh, you know, that we're showing, um, you know, as, as filled by federal funds that we're not exactly sure, and we won't know until April first or shortly thereafter, once the state has adopted a budget, where this gray number actually ends up. Um, and then right now, since it's a placeholder, what we're using it for and what the state has basically told us is you're using it to balance your budget, um, for next year. If this gray funding were to go up to even flat foundation aid, what is that three point one five million dollars used for, um, i- in addition, um, to the state aid? And how long can we use it for? Can we use it for just next school year? Can we use it over a two-year period or more to keep, um, you know, things relatively flat? So some of the positives of the budget, um, special education costs, um, we're well under budget on special education for BOSEs this year. And that, uh, line is decreasing three hundred and thirty thousand dollars in our budget. Typically, we see a large increase in this area. So, so that's a, a cost for students placed in BOSEs programs, um, throughout the region. Um, so that's a definite positive where we're typically, we're seeing several hundred thousand dollar increase, we're seeing a decrease. That really helps to balance the budget. And then the other area is BOSEs aid. Um, our BOSEs aid increases is about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And the majority of that is because, um, we worked with the IT department, Dan Bowman, um, this year to move our purchases for instructional technology, computers, um, though, uh, software, hardware from direct purchases with vendors through BOSEs. And because we purchased it through BOSEs, we get the aid on it, about sixty percent aid. Um, so every hundred dollars we spend, we get about sixty dollars back. So that has resulted, um, in about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars of that seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar increase. And so what I can show you on this next slide is, you know, there's two parts here. This are, are all the different aid categories in twenty twenty-one on the left and twenty-one, twenty-two on the right. There's two big major changes. One is the increase is caused by, as we just talked about, BOSEs. And most of these are staying relatively flat. There might be some minor adjustments in many of our categories. Um, but BOSEs aid is where we're seeing the state aid increase from year to year, that seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar increase I just discussed. The other area is from that previous slide. This red is the federal aid that is currently, you know, held within, for the foundation aid. And this red in prior year is the CARES Act for the, the, um, the federal stimulus aid. So while we're showing a state aid increase, it's, it's due to moving that expense into BOSEs and receiving the BOSEs aid. So staffing changes, these are the same staffing changes we discussed at the last board meeting. A half special education teacher, um, in the high school, um, due to needs, um, you know, throughout the district. One implementation coach in the primary elementary school, which would be, um, responsible, really, the, the main responsibilities would uh, be due to the, uh, new math curriculum and the new science standards that are being released next year. And formally, uh, recognizing the dean of students in the high school. That you notice there's not a number before that. They'll really depend on, you know, when we post that and, uh, see who applies and gets that position as to whether it needs to be a one point O or a point five or, you know, a, a fraction of a, a staff member. So those possessions, and then there's one reduction of a teaching assistant in the primary elementary school. So on the revenue side, um, when we look at property taxes, pilots and penalties, an increase of one point one million dollars. So in, within that is, you know, there's an increase in pilots this year. Within that is that two point oh seven percent increase, the nine hundred eighty-five thousand dollars approximately in the tax levy, if we were to go out at the, the levy, um, the, the levy threshold, um, state aid, you're seeing a decrease here of one million six hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And that's because of that, um, federal, you know, using the federal stimulus funds to, to offset the foundation aid reduction. And then, um, an increase in the federal stimulus funds of two point six million dollars. The difference between the CARES Act of five hundred fifty thousand dollars last year and this newest stimulus, um, the second stimulus funds of three point one five million dollars. We don't really see a projected change in our Medicaid reimbursements and all other miscellaneous revenues, um, combined to one, about eighty-one thousand dollar increase. Um, and a, a portion of that is because, um, interest rates went down for, um, our investing into this current year. We're seeing those climb back up, um, slightly, and so we can, uh, project a, an increase in that area. So overall, an increase in revenues of just over two point one million dollars. At the expense side, you're seeing the majority of the increase in, at the program. So program, obviously, um, as we've talked in years past, is anything that the students deal with. It includes transportation, all the teachers and the, the teaching staff, um, and student materials. Um, that's the largest increase and continues to be the largest part of our budget. Administration, you're going to see a year-over-year increase, um, due to, you know, raises and increased costs. Um, and then capital, you see a slight decrease. Um, those are just, you know, some minor adjustments within capital. And capital is, um, you know, any of our utilities, um, capital projects, any of our debt service and, um, anything with our facilities, um, program. So an increase of, uh, overall, just, uh, just over one point six million dollars. So our current budget status, um, where we currently are, seven mil- seventy-nine million three hundred and thirty thousand dollar budget. Um, the majority of that would be made up of the tax levy that, again, that number, that forty-eight million five hundred and thirty-three thousand is the tax levy limit, if we were to go out at the, at the full amount. All other revenue is about twenty-nine million four hundred thousand dollars. And then we would need about one point four million dollars in use of reserve and fund balance to balance the budget. Again, this is lower than what we've had in the last several years. Currently, we're right around one point nine million dollars. So it's about five hundred thousand dollar reduction in reserve and fund balance. If we had not moved the expenses over to BOSEs and received that BOSEs aid, we would expect that to be another, um, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars in reserves and fund balance to balance this budget. So it'd be a very different budget, um, than, you know, than what we're currently working through right now. So just an example, this is not, uh, obviously the e- exact, um, reserves, um, that we would use at this point, depending on where we, where we go out at the levy and where the budget finally ends and where state aid comes in. Um, but an example of, you know, different reserves that we would use to balance the budget and some fund balance, um, as a final balance. So the next steps, the, the really big next step for us is to wait the legislative state aid, um, release here. Hopefully, you know, the budget's supposed to be adopted by the state by April first. Hopefully, they're on time with that, um, to give us some time to, um, reflect on these numbers. Um, and we need to wait on, you know, these details of the two federal stimulus funds that were most recently passed. How can we use them? When can we use them? What can they be used for? Um, once we have that information, we'll be able to determine their tax levying reserves. And then typically, we've adopted the budget at the first April meeting, which will be April fifth, um, right after spring break. Um, my guess is we probably won't adopt it then. If the, if the, uh, if the but state adopts the budget on April first, we won't have that information until the second or even into that weekend potentially. And there's going to be some major changes. So I think at the April fifth meeting will most likely be a discussion about what changed. Uh, maybe we'll have some ideas on the federal, um, funds and how they can be used and have some discussion about that. And then April twenty-first, I would assume we would adopt the budget. It must be adopted by the twenty-sixth this year. Um, budget hearings, May tenth, and the budget votes, May eighteenth, and hopefully we're doing that all in person. So I will stop sharing.
Thank you, Matt. And just as a reminder, April twenty-first is slightly off schedule for us. It's a Wednesday, not a Monday because of the BOSEs vote. Thank you very much. Questions, Matt? Michelle?
So I know we talked about looking at our programming for additional summer programming or before school or after school programming. And, and it, I know, my guess is the answer is going to be, we're also waiting to find out what we get in for the federal dollars. But do we have any, um, planning or incorporating that into our budget numbers?
So, yes, yes and no, Michelle. So we've had a lot of discussions about, um, you know, what Jamie had presented as far as expanding summer school programs, before and after school programs. We believe as part of the American Recovery, um, Act, the most recent, um, stimulus funding, that twenty percent of that will need, be need, needed to be used for programs like that for, um, learning loss. Um, so, you know, summer programs before and after school programs were the areas that we would be able to, we hope to be able to use that for. We have increased our budget for summer programming, especially for the middle school and the primary elementary school at this point. Um, but yes, we're still having discussions about that and that may be a major change as well, you know. So when we adopt that final budget, the expense might be higher than what we just, you know, discussed as we add programming. Um, the other part is we don't know with these federal funds, if that's going to be a general fund area, you know, similar to the CARES Act, it's just part of our budget. Or is it going to be a federal grant and it's not part of our, you know, our daily budget at all, similar to our Title V or, you know, th- those types of grants that are out there. So those are areas that we need some clarity on, for sure, Michelle. Great question.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you very much, Matt. Now we have a consensus agenda and supplemental. I'll ask for motions, please. Jen and Michelle, questions or comments? All in favor? Opposed? That carries unanimously. Thank you. And committee reports, Beth, policy, please.
Um, so I need to make a motion on behalf of the committee for policy number twenty-one thirty. It is, um, a required policy by the state, general, gender neutral, single occupancy bathrooms.
As that is on behalf of the committee, it does not need a second. Questions or comments? All in favor? Opposed? That carries unanimously. Thank you, Beth. Did you want to add anything else?
Yeah, I just wanted to take a minute and publicly thank our, um, Julianne Miller for presenting, giving up part of her Saturday for four county to tell new, new board members, um, what they're getting into. Um, I, from what I hear, the reviews were wonderful and you did a great job. And thank you very much for saying yes when you got the phone call.
Thanks, Beth. Uh, let's see, district committees, CIE? Milton, please.
So, um, CIE met on the tenth and we reviewed and approved a, a pursuing Gemini status for a health class to begin in twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. Uh, we got an update from Jean McKenzie on the intervention program. And, uh, we also heard, uh, a review, uh, actually, we conducted a review of the summer curriculum writing proposals. And those, um, those proposals, we provided feedback to a subcommittee and we expect to have those back in May um, to review those recommendations. And finally, we heard an update from Dr. McFarland on professional development.
Great. Thank you very much. Uh, Julianne, diversity, equity, inclusion, please.
Sure. Um, so the whole large committee met last week to take the sort of outline of a plan that the advisory group had come up with and to try to start fleshing it out as we work towards building a diversity, equity and inclusion plan for the district. Um, so we divided up into different groups. Um, the plan or the skeleton of it as it stands now has a number of different areas that we're looking at through the lens of building our capacity around diversity, equity and inclusion, including teaching and learning, um, leadership and staff, policies and procedures, student experience, family and community involvement. Um, that might be all of them. I think that's all of them. Um, and flushing that out. The advisory committee is now going to meet again next week and to start going through all of the feedback that we got from the broader group. Um, as we continue to flush out that plan and really make it as specific as we can.
Great. Thank you very much. Uh, Jen, COVID nineteen?
So as you know, we meet every Friday. It's the, the way I wind down my week is to, to, uh, spend some time with Brian and Vern and Mike. And this particular week, we really focused on what would happen if, uh, we, you know, go back to five days a week and we load the building and had quite a conversation around additional filtration, particularly for lunchrooms where we know kids will be without masks and we start to, to load in that direction, just some clarity. So there are many places in the district that run with the equivalent to a HEPA filter that's a MERV eight, and that's great. Uh, if you have a very humid day, that works especially well. But if you're talking about some major loading in an area like in the cafeteria, you want to go to a MERV thirteen or a super HEPA. And so we had some discussions about doing that. We also, um, are going to do some more work around humidity. The guys are getting sick of humidity. Um, maybe some more. And, um, then finally, uh, we talked about how we can think about that kind of filtration uh, process overall as, as we come back, kind of it's in building form, how that'll work. And I can't stress how great everybody's been putting up with me and all of my science shenanigans on all of this. Um, a quick note, though, to go back to an earlier conversation when we talked about reopening the buildings. I have received multiple texts, uh, from kids in the high school and a couple of families, but multiple texts from kids in high school saying, go Carlin, which we know. And, but saying that they really want a voice in this process and they want to have a, a way to get their, their thoughts out. And so far, what I'm hearing is we're a little concerned about yet another disruption. Can we put another option in the survey to say, leave as is? Not, we don't want to come back. We'd like to know how many people might be interested in that option, something to think about. Um, and I really have to say thank you to our, to our students for standing up for, for themselves and, and offering input. So congrats and Carlin, they're proud of you.
Great. Thank you, Jen. Uh, I have nothing else. Jamie, anything else from you?
No, I don't think so.
Okay. Well, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn then. Michelle? That was fast. And Megan, thank you very much, everybody. Keep up the great work. Thanks for being with us tonight. Good night.
Night.